If you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
So tonight, we do have a proclamation and a presentation. So the proclamation is in honor of Visit Oceanside's 10-year anniversary, and I will read it, and then we have, I believe, a short video from them. Whereas Visit Oceanside is the official tourism marketing organization for the city of Oceanside, promoting travel to the city for both leisure and group visitors; whereas Visit Oceanside was established on May 15, 2020, and is the first destination management and marketing organization for our city. Whereas the mission statement for Visit Oceanside is to unite our community's tourism businesses to generate visitor spending that will positively impact jobs, tax revenues, the coastal environment, and the quality of life for the city of Oceanside; and whereas visitor spending in 2019 was $415 million, doubling since 2010. Last year, this visitor spending directly supported more than 3,500 jobs. Visitor spending also generated $14 million in local tax revenues, tripling since 2010. Ancillary businesses benefit from visitor spending, as 74% goes to businesses other than lodging. These include restaurants, cultural menus, attractions, retail stores, and recreational activities. And whereas Visit Oceanside also operates one of the state's official visitor centers, leveraging the power of the state brand, the center helps thousands of visitors annually. This knowledgeable staff and volunteers provide a concierge level of services, from trip planning to assisting and comforting visitors during natural crisis. The center often provides the first impression for visitors entering the city, influencing what they experience, extending their length of stay. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Peter Weiss, Mayor of the city of Oceanside, on behalf of the entire city council, congratulate Visit Oceanside on 10 incredible years, looking forward to the opportunities that lie ahead. We can't wait to see what Oceanside spirit achieves over the next 10 years. Issued this 19th day of August 2020. Andy, you're up.
Oceanside means to me my hometown. I wouldn't want to live anywhere else.
Sense of belonging, community, and support.
My Oceanside means a place with strong people that enjoy the ocean and are welcoming out of other people.
The beaches, the Mission, the airport, and our agricultural community.
An amazing harbor with a unique oceanfront experience.
The authenticity, the diversity, the way we come together as a whole.
All of us pulling together to make a city where I want to live.
For 10 years, Oceanside Tourism has been on an incredible journey, doubling visitor spending, creating thousands of jobs, and tripling local tax receipts, so our city can keep Oceanside safe, beautiful, and culturally enriched. This couldn't have been achieved without you, our passionate, dedicated locals who live the spirit of Oceanside.
I would describe the spirit of Oceanside as real and chill.
Unassuming, like what you see is what you get.
Oceanside is local, it's authentic, it's unlike any other beach town.
I'd describe the spirit of Oceanside as one that's really creative. The people that live here are innovative.
A community that embraces different cultures to me, in food, in music, in all kinds of celebratory events.
Extremely humble, proud, positive, and collective. We as a community can do anything together.
Supporting locals, appreciating what's always been here, but also being able to evolve.
You make this a place thousands of visitors cherish as a home away from home. Despite celebrating this milestone during challenging times, we look forward to the opportunities to come, and to what the spirit of Oceanside can achieve in the next 10 years.
Happy anniversary, Visit Oceanside, and cheers to 10 years.
Cheers to 10 years.
Cheers to 10 years.
Cheers to 10 years.
Happy anniversary, Visit Oceanside.
Cheers to 10 years.
Cheers to 10 years.
Cheers to 10 years.
Congratulations, Visit Oceanside. Our next presentation is our Virtual Employee Service Awards. Rob, do you want us virtually out in front?
You can stay there.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the City Council, Robert O'Brien, Human Resources Director. Now, under normal circumstances, this would be an opportunity to recognize in person those employees who have completed 20 or more years of service with the city. Although the current pandemic prevents us from celebrating in the manner we're typically accustomed to doing, I thank you for the opportunity to take a few minutes this evening to share with our viewing audience the names, and in most cases, the faces, of those members of our Oceanside family who have successfully served our great city for 20 or more years. So with that, I have the distinct pleasure this evening of beginning this presentation with the following employees who have completed 20 years of service. Jose Avila, Maintenance Specialist, Public Works. Mark Barnett, Fire Engineer, Fire Department. Deborah Calowett, Customer Account Representative II, Financial Services. Michael Dumas, Senior Utility Worker, Water Utilities. Eric Elgard, Police Officer, Police Department. Antonio Godinez Jr., Senior Code Enforcement Officer, Neighborhood Services. Jose Gonzalez, Information Systems Analyst II, Information Technology Division. Steve Jones, Assistant Building Official, Development Services. Agon Murtha, Utility Worker II, Water Utilities. Michael Moran, Application Analyst IV, Information Technology Division. Catherine Morgan, Senior Police Records Technician, Police Department. Bradford Portlock, Automotive Technician III, Public Works. Matthew Price, Fire Captain, Fire Department. Rocky Rayberg, Fire Captain, Fire Department. David Sanchez, Utility Worker III, Water Services. Richard Schickel, Police Sergeant, Police Department. Ivan Sosa, Utility Worker II, Water Utilities. Dorcas Tapuli Badillo, Senior Customer Account Representative, Financial Services. And then we go on to those who have completed 25 years of service with the city. Scott Blausch, Fire Engineer, Fire Department. Philip Cotton Jr., Fire Captain, Fire Department. Greg Diavola, Fire Battalion Chief, Fire Department. Marco Mendoza, Police Sergeant, Police Department. Brian Myers, Fire Captain, Fire Department. And then 30 years of service. Daniel Cavatino, Utility Worker I, Water Utilities. Angela Hanifin, Housing Administrator, Neighborhood Services. Kelly Carmeyer, Program Specialist, Police Department. Brett Lacour, Laboratory Assistant, Water Utilities. Jose McNally, Fire Captain, Fire Department. Mark Rowe, Fire Captain, Fire Department. And finally, celebrating 35 years of service, is John Berry Jr., Cross Connection Control Technician, Water Utilities. Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the City Council, on behalf of the department directors, I offer our congratulations to everyone recognized this evening, and thank each of them for their continued commitment to serving the city of Oceanside. For those that are here this evening, please join me in a quick round of applause for
Thank you, Rob. Mr. Mullin?
Thank you. The council met in closed session to discuss Item 2 on the agenda, Conference of Legal Counsel on Existing Litigation Involving the Workers' Compensation Claim of Dale Stewart Versus the City of Oceanside. There's no action on Item 2 to report. Under the Brown Act, there was no meeting on Item 1, the labor negotiation item.
Thank you. That will go to closed consent calendar, which is Items 4 through 23. Mr. Navarro, do we have any public?
We only have public on Item Number 10.
Move adoption on balance?
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second on the balance.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Who do we have on Item 10 there, Mr. Navarro?
On Item Number 10, the City Clerk's Office received a public comment from Bill Bachelor. My name is Bill Bachelor, 1916 Moreno Street, 30-year resident of Oceanside. I admit that I am using this consent item as an excuse to give a well-deserved shout-out to some city employees. Of course, I fully support the contract extension for fact as an important part of the senior transportation program. As many of you are aware, my wife, Janet Bachelor, built these transportation systems and ran them for many years. It is impossible not to feel personally attached to their continued success. Rides to medical appointments, grocery shopping, and other critical trips are a lifeline to the world for many of our seniors. During this health crisis, when rides have not been practical and possibly not safe, the transportation team did not sit back, they got busy. With a creative spirit that can only be described as inspiring, they took their available resources of drivers, volunteers, personal autos, and their network, and used them to provide whatever was needed, ranging from meal deliveries to supporting critical logistics. These are services on paper, are blacked in on white pages, but behind these services are city employees that qualify as unsung heroes. So let's take a minute to elevate their status above unsung heroes. I want to publicly give a thanks to Quincy, or Quinny, Bob, CJ, and Homer for everything they do for our seniors. They serve with a grace and selflessness that is a model to emulate. Bill Bachelor, District 3. That concludes the public comment.
Deputy Mayor Fowler?
Second.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. Go to our general items. First one is Item 24, the introduction of an ordinance in regards to tobacco retailer licenses. Mr. Munt?
Manager of the city of Oceanside, and tonight, I'm here to introduce an ordinance requiring Staff recommends that City Council introduce an ordinance adding Sections 7.91 through 7.92.2 to the Oceanside City Code, requiring businesses that sell tobacco products to obtain a local tobacco retail license. Some background, the term tobacco products includes traditional dry tobacco, but also includes all vaping products, vaping liquids, any other items that might be consumed containing nicotine or using a vaping device. In 2016, the minimum age to purchase tobacco products increased from 18 years old to 21 years old, but despite these new restrictions, the California Department of Public Health data shows that youth are still able to purchase tobacco products 19% of the time. These underage sales occurred at vape shops, convenience stores, liquor stores, and supermarkets. And this is the statewide data from the California Department of Public Health showing those locations. I know the text is rather small, but the last column there is a 19.1% success rate when youth were able to purchase these tobacco products. As some background, other cities in the county that have enacted a tobacco retailer license have been successful. City of Vista reduced their sales to youth from 39% before the TRL was introduced to 1% afterwards. City of El Cajon had a similar number, 40%, that dropped to 1% after their tobacco retailer license. And for some comparison, statewide, it's 19%. The last information available for the city of Oceanside was from 2017. It was a study done by Vista Community Clinic that showed youth were able to purchase tobacco products 24% of the time. Question of how many businesses this would affect, there's approximately 100 businesses in the city of Oceanside that sell tobacco products, according to the state of California. A tobacco retailer license could be denied based on criminal background of the applicant, and for any violations, once that license is issued, would result in immediate suspension upon the first violation of 30 days. Second violation would be 90 days, and the third violation would be a full revocation of that license, and that's good for a five-year period. So if there's any subsequent violations in that five-year period, these revocation or suspensions would occur. That's in addition to criminal enforcement or administrative enforcement. And the ordinance allows administrative penalties consistent with our current city practices, such as administrative citations. The tobacco retailer license would provide for administration of the license, enhanced enforcement through the Oceanside Police Department by doing underage buy operations, and regular inspections by code enforcement. And the tobacco retailer license can best be explained as an additional license, not just the city business license. For example, a grocery store that sold tobacco products, we don't want to close down the entire grocery store if they sell tobacco to a minor, but this tobacco retailer license could be suspended or revoked for those violations. And this ordinance also allows enhanced penalties for people who do sell to youth. So finally, staff recommends City Council introduce an ordinance adding Sections 7.91 through 7.92.2 to the Oceanside City Code, requiring businesses that sell tobacco products to obtain a tobacco retailer license. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any comments or questions.
Do we have any public, Mr. Navarro?
Yes, we do. On Item Number 24, the City Clerk's Office received 13 comments. 13 were in favor of this item, and only eight asked to be read into the record. Our first comment is from Nadine Scott. I fully support this licensing requirement. I lost my mother in 1986 to lung cancer attributed to long-term cigarette smoking. She started at a young age and could never kick it. Tobacco is a highly addicting substance, some say as addicting as heroin. If there is anything at all we can do to discourage youth from smoking, I'm going to support it. This regulation should help. Thank you for your care, and vote for this item. Nadine Scott, Oceanside. Then our next comment, on Item Number 24, is from Dr. Jean Ma. Hello, Mayor Weiss and Councilmembers. My name is Dr. Jean Ma. I'm an emergency physician and the chief medical officer at Tri-City Medical Center. I am also a board member of the American Heart Association, San Diego Division. As a father of five, I know firsthand how alluring nicotine products can be to our susceptible teens. As an emergency physician in this community for 20 years, I know firsthand the price these teens will forever pay as intentional targets of the growing vaping epidemic. For these reasons, I am encouraged to see the council prioritize the health of Oceanside's youth by addressing tobacco use and nicotine addiction. The easily availability of cigarettes, e-cigarettes, and other tobacco products is fueling an epidemic of youth use. Today, over 30% of high school students report regular tobacco use. We need your help to reduce access to these deadly products at the retail level. A strong, well-enforced tobacco retail license is a proven way to reduce youth tobacco access by stopping illegal tobacco sales to minors. Annual compliance checks on retailers and escalating penalties for violations are necessary in ensuring this policy is effective. Many California communities have implemented strong tobacco retail license policies with these provisions to protect our youth from nicotine addiction. I believe Oceanside youth deserve these same protections. I'd also like to add that the Tri-City Medical Center is a major partner of the North Coastal Prevention Coalition and works collaboratively with NCPC to enact policies that protect our youth from the harm of alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and other drugs in our communities, including this policy. With your commitment to a strong and comprehensive policy, Oceanside can better support youth health and the overall community well-being. I urge the council to not delay in introducing and passing a strong tobacco retail license policy. Thank you for your consideration. Jean Ma. Our next public comment is from Linda Barber. The American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network thanks the council for considering a strong tobacco retail license to protect the health of our youth. As written, your policy contains strong and important components, such as fees that are sufficient for sustained enforcement, annual compliance checks, and meaningful penalties up to and including suspension and eventual revocation of the license for retailers who have repeated violations. A strong TRL adopted at the city level can help to reduce easy access to deadly tobacco products, and will encourage a generation of tobacco-free kids, potentially saving them from a lifetime of addiction and the deadly consequences of tobacco use. We urge your yes vote, thank you. Our next comment is from Erica Carter. My name is Erica Carter, and I have been an Oceanside resident for 20 years. I am the mother of two 7th graders at MLK Middle School and a 9th grader at El Camino High School. My children have witnessed firsthand the damaging effects of nicotine addiction. Their grandparents were lifetime smokers who unfortunately suffered premature death due to the negative health effects of smoking. As a parent and as a community member, I am committed to creating a healthy environment not only for my children to live in, but also for my friends and neighbors who live in the city I love. Currently, we have a youth vaping epidemic, and as a parent, this is concerning because youth tobacco use is now on the rise. It is critical we have a policy in place to protect our youth from smoking initiation. I'm in strong support of a tobacco retail license for Oceanside. It protects our Oceanside kids from the risk of smoking by reducing youth access to tobacco products. The earlier youth initiative smoking, the more likely they are to become a regular smoker. By reducing access to youth, we are limiting the number of kids who become addicted to nicotine. This only benefits our city by enabling our youth to grow up to lead healthy lives and contribute to a healthy workforce right here in our own backyard. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Erica Carter. Our next public comes from Stacy Weaver.
Good evening, Mayor Weiss and Councilmembers. My name is Stacy Weaver, and I'm the Executive Director of the San Diego Division of the American Heart Association. I'm also an Oceanside city resident, mother, and concerned community member. I want to start by thanking you for your work to keep tobacco products out of the hands of our youth by considering a tobacco retail license. By now, we are all familiar with the problem. Youth tobacco use has skyrocketed in the past couple of years because of access to addictive products like e-cigarettes. With nearly 75% of youth reporting their not-refused sale when they try to buy tobacco products, we cannot delay action to address this problem. A tobacco retail license is the best way to prevent illegal tobacco sales to minors in our city. This policy can ensure that retailers of tobacco products and e-cigarettes follow the law and don't sell these deadly products to our kids through annual compliance checks on retailers and escalating penalties for our violations. A 2019 study investigating California communities with tobacco retail license policies show how critical these policies are. The study found that youth living in cities and counties with strong license policies, including annual compliance checks, had significantly lower rates of e-cigarette and cigarette use. They were also less likely to smoke in high school and start smoking at 18. Please enact a strong tobacco retail license to ensure our kids in Oceanside are protected from these deadly products. Our next public comment is from Haley Guafrida. Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, my name is Haley Guafrida, and I'm a community engagement coordinator with Vista Community Clinic. For the past three years, I have been working with youth advocates and other partners to assess underage tobacco sales and a tobacco retail environment in Oceanside. In our most recent Oceanside youth purchase survey, youth volunteers visited 49 stores. Youth ages 18 to 20 were able to successfully purchase a tobacco product at 12 of the 49 stores. That's a 24% sales rate, or about 1 in 4 stores that sold illegal. Youth had their real identifications that showed they were under 21. Many retailers saw the ID and still sold them, while some did not ask to see an ID at all. With the popularity of e-cigarettes on the rise, we wanted to learn from local students how easy they thought it was to buy tobacco products in Oceanside. After surveying 266 local students, we found that 77% of high school students and 81% AmeriCosta College students believed it was easy for people under 21 to buy e-cigarettes in Oceanside. Youth from the community are getting tobacco products from stores in Oceanside. Kids walk to and from schools in their activities, passing these stores where they know how easy it is to buy these products. It is clear that we need to protect kids from acquiring tobacco products at a local level, while also holding tobacco retailers accountable. Tobacco retail licenses are a proven strategy and set a precedence for the city and community to protect our youth. Thank you. Haley Guafrida, Community Engagement Coordinator, Vista Community Clinic. Our next public comment is from Madison Matea. As a student in Oceanside High School, be the resistance member. I hear of ease of access when it comes to buying e-cigarettes, and I feel that the tobacco retail license will take great strides to reduce this growing problem. I am in heartfelt support of the ordinance's approval because compliance checks and annual inspections will greatly reduce youth access to tobacco in our city and limit the sale of tobacco products to minors. Retailers will be more likely to follow the rules when there are strict penalties in place for violating the licensing policies, and I am happy to find these penalties included in the tobacco retail license. Thank you for your willingness to enact such a worthwhile ordinance. Thank you. Sincerely, Madison Matea. Our final comment is from Chelsea Walzak Verks. Hello, Mayor Weiss and Councilmembers. My name is Chelsea Walzak Verks, and I am the Senior Director of Community Impact for the American Heart Association. The city of Oceanside is a wonderful pillar of North County San Diego. We have loved working alongside the community there to inspire healthy living through numerous North County heartwalks, as well as working with the strong schools and clinics to ensure longer, healthier lives for all residents. An astounding 1 in 4 high school students now regularly use e-cigarettes. The increase in popularity of e-cigarettes and other tobacco products have made it clear that we need a licensure program for anyone who sells tobacco or e-cigarettes in Oceanside. that we need a licensure program for anyone who sells tobacco or e-cigarettes in Oceanside. A tobacco retail license policy will help the city reduce illegal tobacco sales to minors by monitoring local stores and penalizing those caught selling tobacco to minors. Evidence shows that high rates of tobacco sales to youth are tied to low retailer perception of being caught and penalized. This is why strong enforcement measures like annual compliance checks on all retailers and escalating penalties on retail shop owners for violations are critical. We are eager to see Oceanside kids and families benefit from the protections a strong and well-enforced tobacco retail license can provide, so we urge you to move forward with this policy. With your commitment to our youth, Oceanside could join the growing list of communities across the state and nation that have prioritized their kids' health by enacting an effective tobacco retail license. Thank you for your leadership in protecting our youth from nicotine addiction and tobacco-related illnesses and death. And that concludes the public comment for item number 24.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Feller?
Thank you. Kurt, yesterday, I believe you sent out a memo on the cost of this license that you were estimating.
There was an estimation, yes.
Could you tell the general public?
Sure. There are three costs that go into this license. One is the administration of the license by our finance department, similar to issuance of a business license. The other fee is to the Oceanside Police Department to do the undercover investigations and buys. And then the third expense would be for the Code Enforcement Division to do these inspections. So the total cost is based on staff time, approximately the $300 range. That fee will be presented at a future council date through a resolution.
Okay. I appreciate that. I had a great conversation in understand what we're trying to do here. And I did have one question about the vaping manufacturing. Is that in any way related to what we're dealing with here within the cities? For instance, how does this affect marijuana dispensary deliveries? I mean, marijuana is in this deal too, so.
Deputy Mayor, members of the council, the ordinance that's before you does not have anything to do with the cannabis licensing. This relates to tobacco regulation, and vaping is included within the definition of tobacco. The cannabis businesses are regulated through a separate section of the city code.
Okay.
So it's a local license requirement under the city code as well as a conditional use permit. That's a different regulatory structure than what's before you.
I would think that if we're manufacturing vaping within the community, it's going to filter into this group as well in a fashion.
Deputy Mayor Feller, if I could just follow up. A store that has a tobacco license could not be selling vaping products. So in other words, a store that has a local license to sell cannabis products, we don't allow, at this point, cannabis retailers. We have two non-storefront delivery services. So a business that would be able to obtain a tobacco license under this city code section, that's before you, could not sell cannabis products.
So that pretty much answers the question. In our attachment for the ordinance, it says 1 in 8 California high school students currently use tobacco products, and 84% of all high school students use tobacco products with an electronic smoking device. So a pretty dangerous thing going forward. I have all the, I got all the answers that I needed except those two. So I move introduction of the ordinance, and let's get it done.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. I'm going to second that motion. Tobacco products, especially vaping and vaping paraphernalia, are an especially very critical health and safety issue for our youth. And when I looked at that, that 1 out of 8 high school students use tobacco products, and 83% are by electronic smoking devices, basically vaping, I mean, that is such a high percentage. It almost seems like what's been happening with tobacco for youth was on the decline, but then with vaping products, all of a sudden it shot up. And so I understand that this is something that other cities are doing, and other cities are having success in reducing the use by youth very significantly. I noticed also that what is proposed here will require no street vendors at all, and it will require annual inspections, so that is going to be part of the costs. And in order to even get a license, you will not be able, if you have some kind of a conviction for tobacco-related or even alcohol-related, within the last five years, you will not even be able to get a license. But that once you do get a license, for a first offense, there's a suspension of the license for 30 days, for a second one, and this is within five years, within five years, second one would be, suspension would be for 90 days, and then a third one in five years would be a revocation. So that person would actually lose their license to sell any tobacco products. Is that correct?
Correct.
And would that be for the five years too, to be able to reapply? Would it be starting over again, and you would not be able to get a license unless you have a clean record for five years?
Correct. They would have to reapply, and that application period allows us to look at the five years previous. So if there's a violation, that would preclude them for that time.
And Councilmember Feller did bring up something really critical, really important in that he was talking about manufacturing, and that's, you know, that's at the source. And I know that the state and feds are doing other things. Could you tell us about that? Because I know that we have in the past been asked, can we ban products? Can we put some kind of a stop to any further sales, any further shops selling tobacco products? I've heard from shops, pretty much neighboring shops, pretty upset about the vaping that happens, you know, right outside the shop. So can you give us a little bit about what is happening at the state and federal levels?
Well, statewide, you know, this is addressed by several different agencies. The federal government, the FDA, has addressed smoking and vaping on a different level. As far as the state, which is what we're paying more closer attention to, there's a Senate bill that's in process right now that's passed, the state senate is moving forward to the Assembly Appropriations Committee, and that addresses the flavor ban, banning all vaping or tobacco products that contain the fruity flavors, the chocolate flavors, the alcoholic flavors, anything.
And the packaging too?
Packaging is addressed. I don't recall what the packaging requirements are in this, but SB 793 is currently going through that process to address the flavor ban portion. And that's why that's not addressed in our ordinance.
Which is really critical, because, I mean, if it tastes good or sweet or whatever, of course, that, you know, will encourage people to use more and then become addicted. So any other legislation that's pending?
Not that I'm aware of that's pending. There are some things on the books now with the federal government, FDA. Some of those are required for raping. For example, there's an 18-year age restriction, 21 for tobacco, but California, there's the Stake Act, Stop Tobacco Access for Kids Enforcement, which went in, I think, '94, '96. That kind of sets the groundwork for this whole youth smoking and now vaping epidemic. So sales, any sales of tobacco products to a minor is considered a misdemeanor through the penal code. And then, of course, we have further enforcement actions that we can take through now, our local ordinance, if this should be passed.
Mr. Miller, did you have something to add?
Just that there have been a handful of ordinances that have been adopted to ban flavored vapes at the local level. Those are being litigated right now. The county, for example, the county of San Diego, adopted a ban recently, and that is in court. There's a motion to dismiss pending before the federal district court judge, as well as a motion for a preliminary injunction to enjoin enforcement of it. So we could advise you, I expect those will likely be heard next month. The case was recently transferred from one judge to another, so my understanding is those motions are being rescheduled, but we anticipate rulings in those in the near future. We'll advise you of the outcomes of those decisions.
Thank you. And I want to thank Vista Community Clinic for working with staff on gathering some of this information, making it easier for staff to, you know, look at what other cities are doing. This is a really positive thing, and I thank staff and everyone that's worked on this and the support in the community. I do hope that all our stores that offer these products, you know, have a time to be able to learn and make sure that they understand how serious this is. Because, you know, this is very serious. It's a health and safety for our kids. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a few questions. I really appreciate the idea of this. I have, you know, children, and, but I think it's important when government moves forward on policy, we identify what success looks like. And we're not just doing the bureaucracy of things, and we feel good, but yet, nothing changes. And so with respect to Vista and El Cajon, how many retailers were actually shut down and/or penalized based on your due diligence?
I don't have that information on which retailers were shut down, but the percentage of successful sales, I believe, is a good metric to base that on.
And how do you decide that? How do you decide a before and after? What does that look like, to come up with that matrix?
So Vista Community Clinic previously did, they have a report for Oceanside of those 49 attempted purchases that you heard, and 12 of those were successful.
Okay, so a study was done before it was implemented, and then the study was done after?
Correct.
Because I didn't see, when I did the research on this, I didn't see the before and after.
As far as I know, from speaking with Vista Community Clinic, they do the research on this, that they conducted a, prior to their tobacco retailer license, conducted that sales operation, and then post, or the ordinance going into effect. So Oceanside, obviously, we don't have a retailer license yet, but the data shows from 2017, so a few years ago, that 24% were successful. And I would imagine after we do the tobacco retailer license, if that's passed, we'll do a subsequent follow-up and determine how many sales are effective based on a number of attempts. And that would be our matrix where we could judge things on, based to see if it's effective or not.
Okay, so Vista Community Clinic is going to be the vehicle of where we get our information if we've been successful? Is that, because I didn't see that in the ordinance. I just saw that our cops are gonna, you know, I didn't see how many times they're going to visit the store. I've seen an annual inspection, and I don't understand how an annual inspection is going to identify anything.
So the annual inspection is going to check the store to make sure that they have the proper postings, they have the labels up there, the warnings, the age disclaimers that they have, that the tobacco products aren't available at the counter where somebody can pick those up. That's going to be the annual inspection conducted by code enforcement.
Is that not done by the, currently by the tobacco-regulated industry? Is that not an annual dynamic that the businesses have to go through already?
As far as I know, there's no regular annual check. If there's a complaint, I would imagine that it needs to comply with existing California law, but this would be a local ordinance, so we would have control both for the inspections and for the enforcement.
Okay.
And as far as the enforcement with OPD, there, what's in this ordinance now, as proposed, would be 20, two operations, 10 purchases per operation per year. So they would touch 20 businesses each year and try to make those attempted buys, using a decoy and using the undercover police officers. So that would be where they would be able to confirm the violations, issue those misdemeanor citations for people who do sell, and then start the revocation process in coordination with code enforcement and business license.
My concern is that, you know, I think the education component with the businesses, you know, being a small business owner, these businesses, you know, the employees are being lazy, what have you, they're not identifying. I think having a license mechanism is pretty much, it's also an education opportunity because we're putting the business through this sort of new application. Here's what will happen if you don't comply. So, you know, it will naturally go down the chain, and they're not going to want to make sales. My concern is the longevity of this and, you know, keeping this. So what you're saying is that the police, as a part of this ordinance, will do and report on the sting operations to continue that pressure, to continue that accountability, and it's not just going to get lost in just another application fee that a business has to pay.
Correct.
And not accomplishing the goal, which is, you know, preventing sales to legally underage buyers.
Correct. Yeah, the police department is going to conduct their operations, we're going to talk to them with that data and issue the license suspensions. So the license suspensions are going to penalize the people who violate the code. They're not going to penalize the people who do diligence and check IDs, who check, current law says you need to check people who look or appear to be under age 27, which is a pretty good margin. But if somebody's not checking IDs and they get caught selling to an underage individual, their license will be suspended for 30 days. All tobacco sales will be suspended for 30 days. So that hits them. It is a penalty. It is something that takes away some profit from that business. However, it's not going to affect the operators that follow the rules and should be checking ID of anyone who appears under 27. So I don't think it's necessarily an undue burden on the business owners. I mean, there's obviously stuff that they need to comply with, and there's some checks in place to address those. But it should be the bad operators that are caught, not the good business owners who do their due diligence.
Yeah, that's my concern, is there are some bad operators, and we need to weed them out. But now, all these businesses are going to have to pay $300, including the good ones. Where in the ordinance does it say, does it reference the inspection?
Annual inspection?
Or is it up? John, do you know where that section is? I think your department probably put this together.
Yeah, I'll call Mr. Wen up to see if he knows where that section is. Ling, do you know where that section is?
I read it.
Honorable Mayor, council members, just give me a moment to review the section.
No problem.
I know it is in here.
It's referenced on page 8. That includes that the administration fee will be calculated to recover total costs to include the annual inspection.
That is correct, council members. So page 8, section...
Yeah, that's referencing code enforcement's annual inspection of, to make sure the stickers are up and to make sure that the products, whatever, are far away from the counter, you know, those sort of basic dynamics, which I appreciate, especially if the state board is not doing those inspections. But I'm talking about the two inspections a year that you are referencing, that the Oceanside Police Department is going to perform as a part of this ordinance to keep this going. Otherwise, there's no accountability unless the Vista Community Clinic wants to do a survey for us, which we have no control over. We have no way of actually identifying if there are, you know, bad vendors selling to underage minors.
Okay, I think I understand your question now. I was lost earlier. That resolution establishing the fee is not actually before you tonight. That has to be noticed with the public hearing. And so the justification for the amount of the fee will have to include all of the costs that are associated with it. And so those costs will be estimated in a report before you to justify that fee. So the ordinance itself is not going to say that, you know, the Oceanside Police Department is going to do a surprise visit on, you know, X number of times a year. It's the fee itself will fund that activity and the costs associated. X number of times a year. It's the fee itself will fund that activity, and the costs associated with that fee will have to be established during the public hearing before you.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
So, I disagree with that. I think that if there's an accountability mechanism, for example, code enforcement is going to do an annual inspection once a year, this should state that the Oceanside Police Department is going to do two XYZ operations. If that's what he's saying will be done, I think that needs to be outlined in the ordinance. Otherwise, a year from now, two years from now, five years from now, we're just doing annual inspections, and businesses are paying 300 bucks, and there's no accountability.
I understand your concern. We could add that into, to include either within this ordinance. What I was trying to indicate earlier is that the costs associated, we have to demonstrate, otherwise it's an illegal tax. We have to demonstrate that it's cost-recoverable. The fee is actually not being established tonight.
Right, I get that.
So, this is just the ordinance, the requirement to get it, but it won't actually be implemented until there's a fee in place. So, we could add that as part of this, if you would like, or we could put it into the resolution when the fee is before you. That's what, where it was anticipated to go.
Do fees usually come separate from ordinances in this circumstance?
They can, they can, yeah. Typically, what happens like with the marijuana tax, we did that.
I would just like, I would like to have some language of accountability outside an annual inspection.
Yeah, I understand the concern, and we can definitely make sure that that's specifically targeted in the resolution that comes back before you.
City manager?
Councilmember Rodriguez, Mayor and councilmembers, I would like to add also that that fee would then become, that expectation would become part of the annual work plan for the police department. They would make sure that the vice unit had that in their work plan, and they have also applied for a grant to help fund additional sting operations beyond those that would be funded by the fee.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, and on page five, there is reference again to the annual inspection. No person, business, or tobacco retailer shall impede or prevent reasonable annual inspection or other compliance check by the city to ensure compliance with each provision of this article. That was the other place. But I would be concerned about putting a number for like, how many times officers are going to go visit, because the complaints are going to be coming out, and they ought to be able to respond to those complaints. And if they catch someone, they do. I mean, and that is something that I think I believe they're pretty good at doing, is running those programs. So, perhaps what we're looking for is a report, maybe how often, if you want to require reporting, like maybe every six months or something, or once a year, to see how the program is going. And that would be a good thing. And that would certainly show the public that this is working, and show the community, the business community, that this is, that what they do, paying whatever the amount is going to be, we don't know that today, is going towards a very, very positive thing. And we should, we should actually thank the community for participating in this program, and, you know, addressing this full out. So, is that something you'd like to do?
Yeah, when we get the quarterly crime report, maybe, you know,
Yeah.
Once every six months, they can have some numbers on there of, you know, bad vendors or what have you, that we could see that there's some accountability that's continuing on this.
And I think we do plan on bringing the fee before you with the justification for it during the second reading of this ordinance. This is just the introduction tonight. So, at your next meeting, it should be before you, if I'm not mistaken. Kirk, is that right?
I believe we'll have it ready for the next one or the following.
Okay, next one or the following meeting.
Thank you. We have a motion to second. Mr. Mullen?
This is the introduction of an ordinance of the City of Oceanside, creating a program to regulate and license tobacco retailers within the City of Oceanside.
Please vote.
By vote?
Mr. Navarro, how many items on 30, off-agenda items, do we have?
We have six comments to be read.
Well, let's do those now.
Okay. On item number 30, on comments off of the agenda, the city clerk's office received seven comments, six were asked to be read and to the record. Our first two comments are the same email, and they are from Javier Leon Jr. and Jose Lopez. "I am an Oceanside resident. I believe our city needs to establish an independent citizens' review board to oversee officer-involved shootings, complaints, use-of-force incidents, and police misconduct. We urge you to create, fund, and implement an independent citizens' review board for our public safety." Our next public comment is from Ken Layton. "Ken Layton, speaking only for myself. I have spoken before about how the council aid system has been abused, how some, but not all, aides work on political campaigns and/or simply don't show up to work, how the aides get paid over $80,000 in total compensation, but don't have to actually show up. If that aide's councilman has no honor, he doesn't care if his aide doesn't show up to work, and nothing happens. Councilmember Keim, you told me how wrong it was that the aide for Councilmember Rodriguez wouldn't show up for work for days at a time. You said how this open abuse of the system was causing many other city employees who do have to play by the rules to be outraged. You said it was hurting morale within the city, and that you had had it with this scam. Only problem, you did nothing about it. Rodriguez's aide kept not showing up for work, and your stated outrage amounted to nothing. After three years of milking the system, Rodriguez's aide just now finally resigned. Both no thanks to you, Mr. Keim. You acknowledged how wrong it was, but yet couldn't quite bring yourself to ever say anything about it. Rodriguez's aide quit his aide job just like he quit his run for state assembly, but after, he said he collected $50,000 in campaign donations. Most of his donations came from people who needed and got his boss's vote on their projects. After the votes came, the aide took the money and ran, then he quit the race and his job. Thanks for your outrage, Mr. Keim, thanks for nothing. Oh, and it's interesting to note, Mr. Keim, how your aide will push your run for office on social media and not initially identify that she works at your pleasure. Nice work, if you can get it. Ken Layton." Our next public comment is from Kathleen Lipit. "As a public health practitioner, I would like to thank the city for your concern regarding youth and tobacco. The human environment has a profound impact on both public health and environmental justice. The quality of the air we breathe is critical to all humans, especially to sensitive population groups. Stanford School of Medicine research cites the risk of COVID and vaping in teens and young adults. Among young people who tested for COVID-19 and found those that vaped were five to seven times more likely to be infected than those who did not use e-cigarettes. Those had used both e-cigarettes and conventional cigs in the past 30 days were 6.8 times more likely to be diagnosed with the disease. They warn that vaping puts you at risk for COVID-19 and other lung diseases. The American Society of Heating, Refrigerating, and Air Conditioning Engineers also warn that exposure to environmental tobacco smoke, ETS, continues to have significant health and cost impacts. And the only means of avoiding health effects and eliminating indoor ETS exposure is to ban all smoking activity inside and near buildings. All multifamily buildings should adopt complete smoking bans inside and near them to protect non-smoking adults and children. Please remember that e-cigarette devices and vapes will be manufactured by marijuana manufacturers and sold out of marijuana outlets, marijuana retail outlets. Thank you. Kathleen Lipit, public health practitioner, public policy advocate, and educator." Our next public comment is from Kelly McCormick. "This is Kelly McCormick. I'm the parent of two teenagers, and I run a youth mentoring program. With parents going back to work while schools remain closed, we're finding that many teens are home alone without adult supervision. This gives them a greater opportunity to engage in unhealthy behaviors, vaping being one of them. Unfortunately, we're learning that teenagers and young adults who vape face a substantially higher risk of COVID-19 than their peers who do not vape. According to research just released by the Stanford University School of Medicine, young people who vaped were five to seven times more likely to be infected by the virus. The studies, the study's author says the lung damage caused by vaping is a major factor in raising the risk of contracting the disease. Many of these young people already were experiencing symptoms like coughing, fever, tiredness, and difficulty breathing before they became infected with coronavirus. E-cigarettes release many chemicals that are poisonous to the lungs and damage multiple parts of the respiratory system. Studies show that marijuana smoke and vapor are associated with inflammation of the airwaves, similar to that in patients with chronic lung disease, bronchitis, and asthma. All of these conditions increase the risk of severe complications from COVID-19. Sweet flavors and youth-oriented marketing campaigns can lead teens and parents to underestimate the danger. Family needs support, education, and government policies that favor health and safety over corporate profits. Kathleen Lipit." Our final public comment is from Wayne Gudnitz. "In response to the recent request from Save Our Streets regarding the consideration of putting basketball hoop nets and rims back up at Baldurama Park, John Landis Park, Chavez Park in Crown Heights, and Melba Bishop Park, SOS would like to thank and acknowledge City Manager Deanna Larson for responding within several days of our request, which was made last week. Also, since December 2019, our city manager has responded to the gang graffiti in the same neighborhoods, plus Fireside and Libby Lake neighborhoods as well. SOS has been in contact with representatives of Oceanside Youth Basketball, formerly of the Boys and Girls Club of Oceanside, Warriors Football Rugby, Girls Softball, and Junior Seao Club 55 Fitness Members and supporters, all awaiting for which direction our renowned sports town will be headed in. SOS has submitted a short list of requests to our city manager. These requests and concerns are not new, but went nowhere with city administration leadership in the past. We hope change is coming soon." And that concludes the public comment.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to our 6 o'clock public hearing item, number 27, which is adoption of resolution regarding a coastal permit for the Rockin' Baja Lobster. We will open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
Staff?
Just the city staff report, staff only?
Staff.
Staff.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Weiss, Harbor District Board President and Directors. I'm Tiffany Chen with the Planning Division. Before you is a regular, is a request for a regular coastal permit for six outdoor dining gazebos at Rockin' Baja located in the harbor. Staff recommends that the Harbor Board of Directors adopt a resolution to approve regular coastal permit RC 19-16 to allow six gazebos within the outdoor patio area of Rockin' Baja Restaurant located at 258 South Harbor Drive. Rockin' Baja Restaurant is located at the south end of the harbor, just west of the lighthouse feature. The property has a zoning designation and land use designation of harbor. Business license records show that the restaurant has been in operation since the 1990s. The gazebos that are being reviewed under this application are already existing and have been in place for some time. They are the brown pitched roof structures in the photos. The necessity of the regular coastal permit came to planning's attention through a code enforcement case and a building permit plan check review. Due to the location of the property within the appealable area of the coastal zone, a regular coastal permit is required for any proposed structures. Six gazebos are included as part of the request, four 11 feet by 11 feet, and two 11 feet by 14 feet. They are all about 10 and 1/2 feet tall to the highest point, and consist of wood posts with pitched aluminum roofs. Here's the overall site plan, showing the location of the gazebos. The four that are 11 by 11 are grouped together at the west side, and the two that are 11 by 14 are grouped together next to the lighthouse. There's a clearance of about 5 and 1/2 feet for the walkway on the west side of the restaurant. In terms of general plan land use compliance, staff finds that the gazebo's style and materials complement the harbor's aesthetic. They are located within the least outdoor area for the restaurant and provide patrons with a shaded environment. The structures were reviewed for compatibility with the existing surrounding development in the harbor, per the Small Craft Harbor Precise Plan. As previously mentioned, the property is located within the appeal jurisdiction of the local coastal program. Since the gazebos are below the height of the restaurant, they will not impact public coastal views. There's also no applicable string line setback. Staff has determined that the project qualifies for a new construction or conversion of small structures, CQ, categorical exemption, since the gazebos are accessory structures to the restaurant. The Harbor and Beaches Advisory Committee unanimously recommended approval of the gazebos at its June 15 meeting. Thus, staff recommends that the Harbor Board of Directors adopt a resolution to approve regular coastal permit RC 19-16 to allow six gazebos within the outdoor patio area of Rockin' Baja. That concludes my presentation, and the applicant may or may not be on the line. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro? No public on this item. We will close the public input portion. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. I don't know how many times I've been to the Rockin' Baja Lobster. Since when? The 90s? Never thought about, you know, gee, is this, did they get a permit? It's a great business. This basically proves what's already there, right? So, I'm going to go ahead and move, is it approval? Move approval. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Fowler?
Second.
Second, please vote.
Great food, by the way.
By vote?
We'll go to 28, which is introduction of an ordinance regarding amending city code to establishing an amended text as part of the LCP for inclusionary housing ordinance changes. And we'll open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
The BIA and staff.
Staff and public?
Staff and public.
Staff.
Staff and public.
Good evening. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Weiss and City Council. I'm Shannon Vitale with the Planning Division. I'm here tonight to discuss proposed revisions to the city's inclusionary housing ordinance. Staff recommends that the city council introduce an ordinance to amend Chapter 14(c) and adopt a resolution establishing the amended text as part of the local coastal program to incorporate the following revisions. Number one, adding a definition of net building area. Number two, adding a provision for the reservation of rental units. And third, adding clarifying language regarding the deferral of in-lu fees. Additionally, staff is asking for city council direction to move forward with a more comprehensive review of the inclusionary housing ordinance as part of Phase Two. The city's inclusionary housing ordinance requires that residential projects consisting of three or more units reserve 10% of the units for low or moderate income households. As an alternative to providing onsite affordable units, a developer may pay an in-lu fee. The in-lu fee is adjusted annually and is based on the sales price data and affordable housing cost calculations of the preceding calendar year. The fee amount is intended to subsidize the price of a median sales price home in Oceanside to make it affordable for a moderate income household. In 2011, the city council directed staff to revise the in-lu fee formula. The formula was revised to calculate in-lu fees based on square footage instead of per unit, and resulted in a reduction of the required in-lu fee amount. Thus, most developers have chosen to pay the in-lu fee instead of building units onsite. On January 22, city council directed staff to prepare amendments to encourage developers to construct affordable units instead of paying the in-lu fees. Staff suggests the revisions to Chapter 14(c) occur in two phases. The first phase, which is before you tonight, consists of a cleanup to the ordinance, while the second phase would be a substantive update that requires additional analysis and public outreach. As previously stated, Phase One of the ordinance update includes adding clarifying language to the ordinance. Staff recommends the following revisions. First, adding a definition of net building area. Net building area is defined as aggregate gross floor area of habitable space in a dwelling unit. It does not include garages, carports, porches, patios, or other areas outside of the habitable space. Second, adding a provision for the reservation of rental units. This provision was removed in 2011. In response to California case law, this provision shall be added back into the ordinance, thereby applying inclusionary housing requirements to rental housing. Third, adding language regarding the deferral of in-lu fees. Developers may opt to defer in-lu payment, in-lu fee payment in accordance with the city code. Staff from the Housing and Planning Divisions have reviewed the existing ordinance and recommend moving forward the cleanup items as part of Phase One. If given direction tonight by city... If given direction tonight by city council, staff will proceed with a comprehensive review and substantive update as part of Phase Two. Phase Two would be aligned with the city's housing element update, which is anticipated to be adopted in spring of 2021. Phase Two would include substantial public review and analysis, and will include stakeholder meetings with market rate and affordable housing developers. Staff will build on the feedback and input received at a roundtable meeting held last year, and will continue to engage housing developers, industry organizations, and community members in this process. Furthermore, staff is recommending hiring a consultant to complete a new nexus study to determine if the formula for the in-lu fee should be revised to encourage more developers to build reserved units instead of paying the in-lu fee. On August 12, staff brought forward the Phase One revisions to the Housing Commission's for their review and consideration. The Housing Commission voted 9-0 in support of Phase One. In conclusion, staff recommends that the city council introduce an ordinance to amend Chapter 14(c) of the city code, adopt a resolution establishing the amended text as part of the local coastal program update, to incorporate proposed revisions and provide direction to staff to move forward with Phase Two revisions. I'm available as a staff from the Housing Division if you have any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Navarro?
The city clerk's office received one comment against this item, but that comment did not wish to be read into the record.
Thank you. We'll close the public input portion. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. So the Phase One is to basically move in compliance, adopt these changes to be in compliance with new state law and also to encourage more building onsite or on or offsite for projects. So, and also includes, as I said, the state requirements that would include to count rental, that it would apply to rental. So I'm going to move adoption, excuse me, move introduction of the ordinance. And as to Phase Two, I do believe we need to have that analysis, and I do believe that it's very important that this be done with as much public input as possible. And having said that, I hope that we can do this once the COVID is over. I anticipate we're getting closer and closer to, I think, a vaccine and hopefully back to a new normal. Optimism, right? But I think it's very, very critical that we make sure it's at a place and time that will allow for this public exchange and people at the table, everybody at the table, to come up with things that will certainly encourage more building, building rather than paying in-lu fees. So staff was requesting direction as to Phase Two, and, but staff is also recommending these, you know, this kind of broad language to, you know, to go forward with this analysis and study. So I will also move that as part of, as part of this item.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yeah, I appreciate the two-phased approach. I know COVID has really overwhelmed our city planning, and so I agree. I think as we move forward, a Phase Two would be able to allow maximum public input. I really appreciate the roundtable dynamic of, you know, getting the BIA, the private market rate developers, as well as the affordable housing developers, all under the same roof because these are, these are private businesses. And if we, as a city, want to build affordable units, which we desperately need, we need to work with them on what does that look like so that we can create as many of these units as possible and make this successful? Because I agree, just defaulting to an in-lu fee and the city just build our coffers, we're not helping our community with money sitting in the bank. We need to really be smart about this and create as many units as possible. And I think we're going to have the most success by working with the community as well as the private sector to actually do the building. They're the ones that are going to be able to make it happen the fastest. So, thank you. I'm excited to move on Phase Two, and I plan on being heavily involved in that process. And thank you. Thanks a lot. That's it. I'll second the motion.
Deputy Mayor Feller?
Thank you. In Phase Two, I think as the building industry, they need to be able to be at this table seriously, and the incentives are probably what is going to make or break Phase Two. Because if we're not getting the end user affordable housing, that's, that's on us. So we really need them. Those are the people that actually build homes and know how much it actually costs. So I appreciate, you know, I support going forward with Phase One, but Phase Two is going to be very important.
And my comment real quick, because I support what everyone else has said, and I just would like to encourage, as you go down the path of Phase Two, to be creative and flexible as to how we can provide those units, even to the extent that if someone's going to build affordable units onsite, if we can get them to build more than their minimum requirement and use those as kind of like a mitigation bank, like we do for Habitat, if there's a way of allowing that to occur, I think that'd be great as well. So we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
And to introduce the ordinance, this is the introduction of an ordinance of the city council, the City of Oceanside, amending Chapter 14(c) the Oceanside City Code regarding inclusionary housing by the addition of subsection 14(c)(5b) and the amendment of subsections 14(c)(4) and 14(c)(6b).
Motion approved. Five oh. We'll move back to item 25, which is a professional services agreement in regards to the Mission Basin groundwater purification facility well expansion. Ms. Dale?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Carrie Dale, Water Utilities Director, here to speak on item 25, which is the well expansion and brine minimization design award. Staff is recommending that city council approve a professional services agreement with GHD Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $1.789 million for design and engineering services during construction of the well, expansion, and brine minimization project, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. This project is stemming from council's goal to increase local water supplies to 50% by 2030. The project includes the addition of two new production wells in the Mission Basin, as well as a brine minimization project, increasing water supplies by approximately With a lot of these projects, you'll know that it takes years for us to get to the stage where we're ready to go to design and then eventually construction. And we had started on this work back in April of 2016 with a grant from the Bureau of Reclamation, a small one, but it allowed us to do a pilot testing project, and subsequently, a second pilot project was undertaken without grant funding, so two different alternative technologies. In 2018, staff worked with a consultant to conduct a feasibility study. This was submitted to the Bureau of Reclamation and accepted by Congress. There are 10 of these projects that are eligible for this type of funding through the WIN program at the federal level for desalination. So in February of 2019, we were notified that we were eligible to be awarded $2.6 million for the project. And in April of 2020, staff released an RFP for design and engineering support during construction, with proposals due in May of this year. As background, this shows the site that was studied for the additional wells. It is directly south of the Mission Basin groundwater purification facility, and included several alternatives for extraction wells at city properties as well as privately owned In total, staff received three proposals. They were evaluated, and GHD was ranked the highest based on qualifications as well as cost. The total contract amount is $1,789,409. There is available project fund balance, and this is funded by water sales meter service fees, as well as the recently let out water bond. Staff recommends that city council approve the professional services agreement, as well as authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. And I'll take any questions you may have.
Mr. Navarro?
There is no public on this item.
None?
None.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. This is a very delicate thing, and I think I mentioned that I'd been to the delta and seen what really bad policies could lead to with the sinking and, you know, and how important it is to, to do everything possible to preserve the use, the uses into the future of such a wonderful, precious resource that we have, the Mission Basin. So I feel that the staff has done a really great job in looking at everything to see how we can get more production of water locally. This is for the, in the best interest of our citizens, rate payers, and not to have to rely on, you know, the more expensive water out there, which includes D-SAL water, which is at this point still the highest cost of water out there. So I'm going to go ahead and move approval, and I thank you, staff.
Deputy Mayor Feller?
Carrie, the pilot test for that 33,000 or whatever it was, where was that test done?
That was onsite at the Mission Basin groundwater purification facility.
When, when did we, we first did a test that we were doing in the harbor, the backside of the harbor there? That was eight years ago, probably?
I, that sounds about right.
Yeah. Okay, I was just curious. I'll, I'll second the, the motion. Thanks.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion approved. Five oh. That will go to item 26, which is...
Could we have two minutes and 43 seconds to a break, please?
You can get two minutes and 42 seconds. Yes, we'll take a break for a couple minutes.
Both of these items listed AMI as integral projects to be implemented in order for the city to meet its water conservation and efficiency efforts as mandated by state mandates and goals. In April of 2017, council approved a contract to conduct a feasibility study on AMI. That feasibility study proved that it was a beneficial project to the city. And in 2019, council authorized two grant applications, both being selected, for a total grant award of $3 million for the project. In November of 2019, council approved an amendment to the contract with our consultant to support staff through contract negotiations with the AMI, a selected AMI consultant. And in June, although the motion to approve the AMI contracts failed, the secondary motion was approved unanimously by council for staff to return with the item after more information had been provided. Since then, on July 30 and on August 13, staff provided two separate memos to council. The first detailing the staffing plan through the implementation of the proposed capital program for the department. The second provided additional information and updated project benefits on the AMI project and answering questions provided by council. There are multiple state mandates that this project addresses, the first being SB 555. This requires agencies to perform annual water audits and evaluate hidden losses within the system using proactive leak detection. An AMI system can better identify leaks on the customer end and allow improved response times to water loss. SBX 7-7 requires a 20% reduction in urban per capita water use. This goal was reached prior to the 2020 deadline. However, we are noticing that water use is rebounding, and this is something that the city needs to comply with on an ongoing basis. An AMI system will allow users to more closely track their water use habits and self-regulate to conserve water. And finally, SB 606 requires urban water, or annual urban water use objective calculations by agencies. These efforts must document the implementation of water use performance measures and progress towards these objectives. AMI is a water conservation system efficiency and will allow the city to more easily meet these SB 606 requirements. Studies have proven that customers being able to see their active water use on a daily basis will allow them to adjust their water consumption habits and reduce their overall use. The benefits to the project, from the project include, but are not limited to, the enhanced customer service the city can provide, replacement of aging infrastructure aligned with the state mandates I just described, reduction of greenhouse gases, as well as improved efficiencies and city safety. AMI is considered a best, industry best practice. Over the last few years, the Bureau of Reclamation has awarded over 30% of projects nationally in the Water and Energy Efficiency Grant to AMI projects. And locally, within the state of California, over 64% of the projects that have received this grant were also AMI projects. Of the 21 Water Authority member agencies, Oceanside is one of six still performing manual reads. Those 15 that have, have, the other 15 have implemented or are in the process of implementing AMI, AMR, which still is an automated system but only collects readings on a monthly basis, or a touch read system, which requires a data collector to physically touch the meter There is a low environmental impact on this project, and staff has identified that the project qualifies for a CEQA categorical exemption, and the Bureau of Reclamation has already approved a NEPA categorical exclusion for the project. If the project is awarded tonight, the program would have a kickoff by the end of August 2020, with the beginning of the AMI network install starting in fall of 2020 and testing through the summer of 2021. Upgrades of the meters citywide would begin summer of 2021 after the completion of the testing and extend through the end of 2023. At its core, AMI is a meter replacement project. Over 70% of the city's meters have reached the end of their useful life and are in need of replacement. This table shows the cost, the capital cost difference between an AMI project and a meter replacement project if we were to not include the network. Because of the grants that were awarded to this project, to the AMI project, the cost and the cost benefits described on the next slide, both projects are anticipated to have a nine-year rate of return. However, there is an additional grant opportunity, and should the project be awarded, staff intends to pursue that grant. If awarded up to the $2 million maximum, that could reduce the project costs to have a difference between the two projects of approximately $1.3 million, as well as reduce the rate of return on the AMI project to eight years. For the reason of the both projects having a similar rate of return, that is the reason why staff is recommending to proceed with the AMI project. This table is the one that was presented back in June, as well as included in the 2017 feasibility study. Since the June meeting, staff has updated all of the figures with current data, as well as identified many of these benefits as qualitative benefits. These are benefits that do not represent actual cost savings, but more operational efficiencies. It won't have any reduction in staff. However, because we will be removing some of the items that staff no longer has to take place in their daily jobs, it'll allow them to focus on other responsibilities that their job requires. I do want to focus on two of these benefits, the first being meter reading reduction, with the second being revenue capture. Meter reading reduction includes cost savings to the division, which include, but are not liable to be reduced. limited to the reduction of staff, the reduction of vehicles to the, on the streets, as well as reduction of workers' compensation claims. Because the department has been anticipating the implementation of AMI, any open position that has occurred naturally through attrition has been replaced with a part-time position as we've been anticipating this project to take place. If AMI is not implemented, those positions would need to be filled with full-time equivalent staff and resulting in additional cost to the division, as shown as the $94,000 in the meter replacement only column. For the, for the revenue capture, revenue capture would come because these new meters would read more accurately. As the meters age, they read less accurately, resulting in water that a customer is actually using, but they're not paying for. This water is considered non-revenue water within the industry, and in turn, it's subsidized by essentially all of the ratepayers across the city. A wholesale replacement of meters would provide equity to all water ratepayers and ensure that those using that water are actually paying for it. These benefits have been realized by other agencies who have implemented AMI and have confirmed this information as detailed in the August 13 memo. To date, 400, over $410,000 has been spent on AMI since 2016. This does not include most of staff's time, as we don't track that directly to this project. With the projects, contracts here tonight totaling $1.2 million, there will be an available balance for the project through the natural, through the annual budget appropriation process. The primary funding source for this project is the water revenue bonds that were recently issued, and that bond issuance was offset by, will be offset by the grants that have been awarded for AMI. User rates and developer fees are used to pay for the debt obligations. And with that, staff recommends that council approve the 11 items before you and detailed in your staff report.
Ms. Navarro?
There is no public on this item.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, and this is the second time that we're reviewing, looking at this, and I do think that you've done all the checking that, that we can in terms of, you know, comparing what we have in terms of our system, how it can be improved, and how it would actually be in the best interest of our citizens, the ratepayers. And we do have to comply with those state mandates in trying to conserve and trying to find out how to gently get folks to cooperate in terms of that conservation, those conservation efforts. I'm going to go ahead and move approval of all 11. It looks like it's 1 through 9 are approvals, and then 10 is a confirm the Class 1, Class 2, and Class 4 categorical exemptions under SEQA. And then 11 is authorizing city manager to execute the agreements, the finance service director or designated to execute the purchase orders. So I'm going to go ahead and move staff's recommendations. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Feller?
Thank you, as always. I get great answers when I'm dealing with, with you all. It's worth it if you ever haven't tried it, having a remote meeting or a face-to-face meeting in better times, but they answer a lot of questions, but two came up while I was sitting here. How is the testing done that you're going to do prior to installation?
So there will be a testing phase of the system. What that will include is the installation of the actual communications network and the data collection network. At that time, we will select and take volunteers for a small selection of actual users within the system and replace their existing meter with a smart meter. Then what will happen is during the next year, we will essentially try to break the system and make sure that we are collecting the correct data and that the system is communicating the new meters reading appropriately and essentially fixing any problems that may occur once we turn the system online. During that time and during that testing phase, in order to avoid any impacts to anyone's bill and to avoid any misreads, we will also still be doing the monthly meter reading of those meters, so that will still be occurring. And then that will also allow us to cross check, cross-check the electronic data with the manually read data. So only once we have completed that, that testing and made sure that the system is working properly, it's communicating with our billing system, we are being able to migrate that data properly, only at that point will we proceed with the full implementation of the meter replacement. At that point, it should be fairly simple of just swapping out the meters and connecting them to the system, as they'll already be able to communicate directly.
In the testing, will you be doing all different sizes of meters and that type of thing?
Deputy Mayor Feller, Honorable Mayor, City Council, yes, we will be doing all different sized meters, as well as all different types of meters. So we'll be doing residential, commercial, agricultural, irrigation meters.
And under the revenue capture, so the reason we can't capture that now is we don't know, is that, am I correct?
Essentially, yes. So as a meter reaches its, the end of its useful life, which is approximately 15, 15 years, it starts reading slowly. So it may have two gallons of water passing through, but it's only counting 1.9 gallons of that water. That's on a smaller scale. But so, yes, that water is just not, it's not reading as fast, so this would be more accurate and allow us to read that, that water.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you for, this is round two. Thank you for the, the clarifications. I think it did fill in some of the gaps for me. I'm still struggling with, with this, but, you know, I'm hopeful that it's for the best with our city. You know, it's just hard right now with where our budget is and where everything's going, so I want to hear what my other colleagues have to say. One question I do have is specifically for John, I just thought of this. Is there any litigation or issues with any of these sort of implementations that you've heard of? You know, with them failing or issues or...
With respect to the advanced metering projects, there's no litigation that I'm familiar with. I'm not aware of any that's been filed.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Lindsay. You mentioned that the payment for this, did you say that developer fees were used to pay for part of the AMI?
Honorable Mayor, City Council, so that the, the primary source initially will be our water revenue bonds, and yes, fees that come in through user fees as well as developer fees do pay for these types of projects.
And I have a question for the city manager. Do you consider this to be an effective use of ratepayer money?
Mayor, council members, Deanna Larson, city manager, yes, it's obviously an expensive project, but as was explained, we really have the choice of doing a standard meter replacement project or going with the new technology in advanced metering. We've already invested $410,000, as Lindsay indicated. We've brought this before council six times previously to talk about the benefits, and I do think that in addition to the return on investment, the ability to comply with the state mandates, as well as to really encourage conservation and do make it a worthwhile project.
Thank you. There's no other lights? Please vote. You did. I think so.
Motion approved, 5-0. Mullen, you're on.
Okay, I've got a series of ordinances for us to adopt. The first is Item 31. This is the second reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, adding Article 5 to Chapter 34 of the Oceanside City Code, establishing a tax on cannabis business activity. You previously introduced this and adopted a resolution. It is already pending with the ROV, but this is just the formality of the second read.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Move adoption.
Second, please vote.
We, we have a public comment on this. Thought Jack was going to second that.
Our public comment on Item Number 31 is from Cindy Rocco. Dear City Council hyphen candidates, please vote no and postpone the marijuana tax initiative for one year with reconsideration for fiscal year 2021, directly related to extraordinary economic times that COVID presents. Now is simply not the time considering the circumstances of COVID. The broader community has been bombarded with an entirely unique set of family and financial stressors, and nickels and dimes matter. With a zero tax, the anticipated tax revenue generation is disposable income saved that can be better spent in our shop local economy with greater exponential results in the long run. The zero tax is an actual economic relief strategy, as it allows for attracting more potential outside revenue coming in into our local economy. We gain the competitive advantage over other local municipalities that do have an actual tax. It's an absolute indirect incentive. The postponement also allows the locals will have the unique opportunity to compete for outside money entering Oceanside. A zero tax in COVID will actually attract outside disposable income to be fed into our local economy during our COVID economic recovery period. In this COVID environment, all forms of relief strategies must be employed. Ask yourself again, why would I tax you, hardworking citizens, at this point of time? I implore you to postpone this unnecessary tax burden. Post-COVID revenue recovery period is not the right time to nickel and dime the community. P.S., if any of my comments have already been addressed, I do apologize. Cindy Rocco.
We have a motion in a second.
Feller, no.
Mayor and Council, Item 32 is the adoption of four ordinances to implement the Climate Action Plan. The first is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, amending Articles 10, 10(c)(11), 11(c)(12), 13, 13(c)(14), 30, and 31 of the Oceanside zoning ordinance to include requirements for electric vehicle parking and electric vehicle charging facilities.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Move adoption.
I was going to title all of them, if that's acceptable to you, Mayor, unless that way, we, when we introduced it, we did it all as once. The second is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, amending zoning ordinance Articles 10, 10(c)(11), 11(c)(12), 13, 13(c)(14), and 30 to incorporate requirements for transportation demand management. The third is an adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, amending zoning ordinance Articles 10, 10(c)(11), 11(c)(12), 13, 13(c)(14), and 30 to incorporate requirements for renewable energy facilities. And the final ordinance is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, amending Articles 10, 10(c)(11), 11(c)(12), 13, 13(c)(14), and 30 to include urban forestry requirements.
Move adoption.
I'll second. We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Finally, Item 33 is the adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, amending Article 30, Section 3006 of the zoning ordinance to establish revised accessory dwelling unit regulations conforming to the provisions of Government Code Sections 65852.2 and 65852.22.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Move adoption.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
I'm going to pause.
Motion approved, 5-0.
I believe we have a general council member comment.
Yes, thank you. Yes, I have some very loving words to, to read by a family, family members of a longtime Oceanside resident. So longtime Oceanside resident Byron Jessup passed away on August 17th after a short battle with cancer. He loved our city and was very proud to serve us as the city's first lifeguard captain, as a founding member and commodore of the Oceanside Yacht Club, as a past president of the Oceanside Pacific Kiwanis Club, as official starter of the Harbor Days Nail and Sale Competition, and as business owner who address, whose address always had to have Oceanside, California. He loved surfing the city's beaches as an OHS Class of 4017 and boating on our beautiful waters throughout his life. A celebration of life will be held at the Oceanside Yacht Club once COVID-19 restrictions are lifted. And these words are being offered by his loving wife, Marge, and his love, and his loving kids, Kelly, daughter Kelly, and son Casey. And our deep sympathies, great man, I know, Marge just turned 95, so a very long life, well-lived, both of them, and she still is surrounded by family, so great man. Thank you.
And with that, we will be adjourning to our next regularly scheduled meeting, 3:30 on Wednesday, September 9th. We're adjourned.